Today. Okay, so welcome to the third candidate forum for the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County. Tonight, we're going to hear from candidates for Port St. Lucie City Council. My name is Andy Polley. I am the president of the League of Women Voters for St. Lucie County, and I just have a few quick announcements before we get started this evening. First of all, if you requested a mail-in ballot, you probably already received it. You can hand-deliver that ballot back to any of the supervisor of elections offices, or you can mail it. If you mail it, we highly suggest that you give 10 to 14 days for delivery. It must be received by August 18th at 7:00 PM in order to be counted. Early voting begins on August 6th, and there are five voting locations that are available for all the voters in St. Lucie County to vote at. They're listed here. And Election Day itself is August 18th. You must vote at your assigned polling place. If you don't know your assigned polling place, you can check it at the supervisor of elections office at their website at slcelections.com. We do advise everyone when you go to vote, if you have a mail-in ballot, or you're going to early vote, or you're going to vote on Election Day, that you check both sides of your ballot. Some of the ballots will have an election race on the other side of the ballot, so make sure that you check both sides before you mail in or turn in your ballot. If you want to learn more about the League of Women Voters, please visit our website at lwslc.org. And we highly encourage everyone to go to vote411.org to learn more about the candidates. It is the League of Women Voters online voter guide, and you can learn more about these candidates that we're going to hear from tonight, and all the candidates on your ballot. The questions that will be asked this evening are not the same as those that appear on Vote 411, so we highly suggest you go visit it and become an even more educated voter. And lastly, the 2020 census is underway, and census workers will be going to homes very, very soon. If you have not completed your census, please do so now and save them the trip to your house. And so now, on to the forum. Tonight, we'll hear from the candidates, as I said, running for city council for Port St. Lucie in District 2. The format for tonight's forum will consist of a 90-second introduction by each candidate, followed by a series of questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Finally, the candidates will make a two-minute closing statement. The order of candidates was randomly selected earlier. This is not a debate, and so candidates will make their statements, and we will move on to the next candidate or question. Candidates will be alerted at 30 seconds remaining, and again, when their time is up. Our moderator for the forums is Carol Wyatt. Carol is the co-owner and operator of local radio stations WPSL, Port St. Lucie, WSTU in Stewart, and WJNX, Fort Pierce. She is the president of the WPSL Christmas Kids of St. Lucie County, past president of the Rotary Club of Port St. Lucie, and a member of the Port St. Lucie Businesswomen. Carol has many years in broadcasting, including as a reporter in Los Angeles prior to moving to Florida in 1993. We are honored to have her as our candidate forum moderator for yet another year. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Carol.
Thank you, and certainly welcome to our third League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forum for 2020. We thank the members of the league who have developed all the questions. We thank the candidates for participating tonight, and especially thank the people who are watching and listening, who are informing themselves in what has been a very, very challenging year. So tonight, we're going to look at Port St. Lucie City Council District 2. It is a citywide race for a term of four years, representing the northwest quadrant of the city. The current office holder is not running for reelection. So our candidates, Chancellor Howell, David Pickett, and John Hawk. We'll begin with opening statements, and we'll start with Chancellor Howell.
Hi. First and foremost, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this very important event. And I would like to also thank the two candidates in there, particularly Mr. Pickett. He is a veteran like myself, so I salute you, sir, for what you've done for our country. And I also would like to thank Mr. Hawk. It takes courage to have your name in the ballot for any race. I don't care if it's for PTA. But in this instance, my name is Chancellor Howell, and I'm a veteran of 20 years of the United States Marine Corps. I've resided here in the city of Port St. Lucie since 2006. Since that time, I've served as an equal opportunity advisor, and also a human resources manager for FedEx Ground at the Florida region. I've also served as a chief operating officer for Evergreen Bio Concepts, and I've also started a couple of businesses. I'm the president of the Treasure Coast Black Chamber of Commerce, located in St. Lucie West, and I'm also the co-owner of Stick It Move Cigar Enthusiast. I am running because I was asked to run this time, and that's what separates this time from the last two occasions when I interjected myself into the conversation. I have endorsements from the vice mayor of City of Port St. Lucie. Also, okay, that stop sign works really good.
We'll have a chance to hear more, but opening statement from David Pickett.
All right, good evening. I'd like to thank the women, the women, the women of the league's voters for this opportunity to speak tonight, and also, Mr. Howell, thank you for those kind words, and thank you for your service too, sir. My name is David Pickett. I've been a resident in Port St. Lucie for, since 1992. I've been married for 29 years. I have five children and three grandchildren. I'm retired from the US Army with 32 years' service, including two combat tours in the Middle East. I hold a master's degree in emergency management from St. Leo University, and for the past four years, I've been employed as a transportation and warehouse manager with Board and Dairy. After retiring from the military, I want to give back to the community that has, that we've lived in for so long, and I felt like running for office would be the best way for me to do so, and have the greatest impact, and play an active role in future decisions of our community. I feel that, given my long military career, with the various leadership roles that I've had within the military, have prepared me for this endeavor. And some of my goals while in office, I want to find additional funding for the police department, to employ more police officers, future economic development on the east and west side of Port St. Lucie, and lowering property taxes, and bringing vocational schools to our city. Economic growth is essential to sustain and ultimately grow our economy, and we have opportunities on both sides of the cities to make that happen. And if elected, I'll work diligently to make those goals come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, opening statement from John Hawk.
Hello. My name is John Hawk. I was born in Baltimore, Maryland, and raised and educated in Maryland, earning a degree in communications. I've been a resident in Port St. Lucie since 2004. However, I've been visiting Port St. Lucie since the mid-1980s. I've seen it grow from a small town, exit 63C, to the seventh-largest city in Florida. I'm an account manager, and I've been active in the community. I have been a member of the Friendly Sons and Daughters of Ireland. I volunteered my time on the board at Castle, an organization that raises money to help abused and neglected children. I am the son of a World War II veteran, and I have two children of my own, a 13-year-old daughter and a nine-year-old son with special needs. I feel Port St. Lucie needs more programs and opportunities for adults and kids with special needs. I am fair and open-minded to the concerns and opinions of all the residents of our city. With the incumbent councilman in my district not seeking reelection, I do not want there to be a void in leadership. I feel Port St. Lucie is headed in the right direction, and I offer fair and honest leadership to keep it on that path. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving me this opportunity to speak to you, the concerned voter who wishes to be informed, as I humbly ask for your vote for Port St. Lucie City Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we move now to the questions from the League of Women Voters. First off, and this will go first to Mr. Howell. "Port St. Lucie has experienced many crises over the years, from natural disasters to our current pandemic. Management of a crisis requires cooperation and input from many sources. What kinds of resources would you use for input and cooperation to address crisis for which a solution is not readily available?"
Well, I would definitely seek out subject matter experts there. And let's talk about the COVID, because that is the crisis that is impacting businesses and individuals who work in the private and public sector. We have to pay attention to the science. Unfortunately, we have some believers out there who are, who don't believe that it's necessary to wear a mask. But if we look at the data that's going across the country, as well as the data that has been tracked from abroad, then we can see where some people, some countries have flattened out, basically. So we have to do that too. But locally here, we have to do that diligently to ensure that our business owners don't feel that they are being, I guess, signaled out and being told to close because of the pandemic. But it's the sooner we can find a vaccine, which may take some time, and the sooner we can identify where the source is, where it's coming from locally, then we can contain it, and then we could get back to business as normal. So first and foremost, we have to find the subject matter experts in those various areas that will help us from that standpoint in terms of how we're going to basically move forward. We may have to wear masks for another two years, who knows? But if that's the case, then that's what we have to do. But I know that business owners are out there. They are struggling, and they're concerned about when they're going to be able to fill those seats.
Okay, same question to Mr. Pickett. "What kinds of resources would you use to address a crisis if no solution is available, readily available?"
First and foremost, I think that we need to, we need to look at the experts for their opinion. The CDC, they offer a lot of good guidelines. They offer a lot of good information that we could all benefit from. We need to pay attention to scientists. We need to pay attention to the data. The recent pandemic, it showed us that, particularly in Miami, where the thing's on the rise, the COVID-19 was on the rise, and people weren't paying attention to it. And I have a friend that's a doctor that's in Miami, and he posts, he puts a blog up every day where he talks about the number of patients that come in the hospital. And what he posts is in direct conflict with, it gives real numbers, and we need to pay attention to those numbers, and pay attention to the data. And we need to rely on those who are, those in the government who make it, their job to make sure that we're safe. We need to pay attention to those kind of people, and base our decisions off that. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Mr. Hawk. "What would you use for health crisis for which a solution is not available?"
Well, I agree with COVID-19. 2020 has been a huge struggle. I am a strong believer in the mask mandate in public places, also social distancing, and as my fellow candidates said, have said, trusting the opinions of scientists, the CDC. Please, if you are feeling sick, stay home. If you've had the chance to attend any of the city council meetings, which I have, when you go in there, they take your temperature, not once, but twice. You have your temperature taken by a staff member, and then you stand on a temperature gauge. We need to have people, if they're not feeling well, please stay home. So mask, social distancing. If you are not feeling well, please stay home. We have too many elderly residents, and like I said earlier, I have a child with special needs. There are a lot of children in Florida with special needs, so we have to err on the side of caution. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to our next question, and we are rotating this after doing a little drawing in the beginning. We'll start with Mr. Pickett. "Generally speaking, Americans are unhealthy, with more than 30% of people meeting criteria for obesity. Port St. Lucie is a fair representation of the American population. What types of activities, opportunities, facilities, and services should the city offer to promote the overall health and wellness of its citizens?" Mr. Pickett?
Being a member of the military for so many years, physical fitness has always been a part of my life. It even is to this day. I'm 55, and I'm probably in the top 90 percentile bracket for my age group, as far as physical fitness goes. I believe very deeply in physical fitness. I see people out every day, riding bicycles, jogging. We need more programs that gets the public involved. The city had, over the COVID-19 with the stay-at-home, they had, on their website, they had an exercise program for people when the gyms were closed. Excellent opportunity for you're at home, you're really not doing anything, time to get some exercise. My family, my family history, they have a lot of diabetes and stuff, so it's very, very close and near to my heart, that I eat right, eat healthy, exercise, so I don't fall victim to that disease. I encourage everyone to exercise as much as possible, and eat less, move more, and you will lose weight. So it's a pretty easy combination. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hawk, same question. "What should the city do to promote overall health and wellness?"
Well, the city, if you've had a chance to go to a few of the parks, especially along an area on Crosstown Parkway, they do have exercise equipment that is available there and free for the public to use. And of course, we are in the process of adding more sidewalks to the city, so you can get out and enjoy some fresh air with social distancing. I've been riding my bike more, and it's very important, which Mr. Pickett did mention, to try and exercise on your own, eat right, take your vitamins. You don't want to be a victim of, they're starting to call it the quarantine 15, so you can't gain that much weight and expect to be healthy. You really must take that upon yourself, to use the resources that are available through the city, the parks, and besides your own personal time for independent exercise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Howell, same question. "What should the city offer to promote overall health?"
Well, I think the city should be a beacon of hope in terms of wellness. That is the first word that came to my mind. And the community center does offer a lot of activity that people can take advantage of, but there are a lot of people that do not travel on that side of the city. So what I think the city can do is collaborate with what people like, or organizations like LA Fitness. We have LA Fitness in Tradition. We also have one in the St. Lucie West within District 2. So I think a collaboration of the businesses out there, I think there's Orange Therapy that's out there as well. So if we can take our interests of wellness out to the public, then I think we will, we will show that we're leading from the front in terms of promoting it. And it should be promoted on the website as well. So I think that's something that I will offer, that I think doesn't take a lot of effort, but will yield huge dividends from a health perspective.
Okay, next question. We'll be starting with Mr. Hawk. "Florida's environment and ecosystem are some of its most appealing attributes for visitors and for residents. Maintaining the health of the environment is important to continuing that appeal. What are your top three environmental priorities for the city, and how will you implement those priorities?"
Well, it's important that, I always feel it's important to recycle. I mean, Waste Management and Waste Probe, they have that available to us. It's very easy to do. That would be one. Secondly, the water is very important to not everybody just in Port St. Lucie, but I think to all Florida residents. It's very important to be aware of stormwater runoff. Probably a lot of people don't know, we are in a time of year when you're not supposed to use a particular fertilizer on your lawn. That runs from June 1st to September 30th. You're supposed, it's available on the city's website. That may be an alert they might, could easily put in your water and sewer bill. And third, it's always important to be environmentally conscious when we are doing construction. A lot of times, you know, you see the impact and work. The city of Port St. Lucie has a great current city manager in Russ Blackburn. You know, we just need to work together and take the opinions and advice of the people who have been there and have the experience. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Mr. Howell. "Your top three environmental priorities for the city?"
Okay. Well, definitely, as Mr. Hawk mentioned, recycling. Everyone in the city of Port St. Lucie should have two types of bins, one for trash and the other one for recycled. So I'm a huge proponent of that. The other thing is the water. We have the annexation out there at the McCarty Ranch. There's effort that's already in place of what the city is doing to make sure that the water is basically taken care of and is filtered correctly by technology that will be put underneath the water in C-23 to put it back in there. So the water, the recycle, and last but not least, is the construction, the impact. Now, I, we were interviewed by them a couple of days ago, and I ensured them that just as impact fees are important to them, environmental impact is important to me as a would-be councilman, because we have to ensure we don't have episodes like we did in Tradition several years ago, where some people were living in houses that were built with Chinese drywall. So we don't want any episodes like that, because I personally know some people who are just recovering from that, and they totally lost, you know, their investment in that property. So those things, we have to continue to be stewards of the planet, and I think that falls on all of us, not just the people on city council, but we have to lead and basically show the constituents the way. And basically, that, those three are my big three.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Pickett, your top three environmental priorities for the city?
Yes, ma'am. Like my two fellow contenders are talking about, recycling is definitely, definitely something that we can, we can all do to, not only to keep plastics and such from going in the landfill and filling up the landfill, but it goes back into other products that's made that can be used. Also, one thing the city is trying to do is, in the older part of the city, along the canals, where the, some of the residents are still on septic and well water, they're trying to get them to move, move those, get constructed, put in, onto the city sewer and the city water, so that sediment doesn't go into the canal and mess up our drinking water there. McCarty Ranch is one of the best, one of the best environmental things the city's done for our residents. It's 3,100 acres out in the western part of our city. They're pumping, they pump water out of the C-23 canal into reservoirs and aquifers there on the site. And during the dry season, that water's brought back to safe drinking levels and sent out to the city residents for consumption. So those three things are priorities for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our next question. "The effects of climate change are projected to significantly impact Florida and its shores. Mitigating that impact opens the door for innovative business opportunities and advancements. How should the city council promote a green business environment and building practices?" And we start this with Mr. Howell.
Yes. Again, as I alluded to before, we have to ensure that the construction companies, the builders, that they are using environmentally friendly materials. I am glad to see around parts of the city, there are communities that I'm seeing the new types of roofs, and they seem to look like they're made out of tin, and solar fields and things of that nature. So it's very important that we hold them accountable, and I think we got a good group, from what I can see thus far, that they are environmentally friendly. At the citizens summit, the, I'm drawing a blank on the department that hosts it, but I think it's the water, water department and the utilities department, they have exhibits that they have to educate the people who attend. And even after that's over, that information is available on the city's website. So it's very important that we stay on the cutting edge of the technology that is going to protect our environment, whatever that may be. So I am a steward of the planet, and I promote being green.
Okay, same question to Mr. Pickett. "How should the city council promote a green business environment?"
As the city continues to grow, there's going to be need, and as our resources begin to deplete with the overpopulation of our planet, we need to look into alternate, alternate sources, such as electric cars. That's a great, a great thing that we have going for us. And the city's going to put a charging station out on Gatlin Boulevard. There's some, I see that the Wawa stations have it. There's some at the, at the tax collector's office. That helps reduce greenhouse gases. Recycling is definitely something that we can, we can take that, the products that we recycle, and we can make them into, to things that we can use around, around our house in construction. And anything we can do to protect our water is something that we need to look into, to, as a council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hawk, same question. "How should the city council promote a green business environment?"
Well, the city council can start by always encouraging something as minor as residents to sign up for paperless billing, handle their billing online, so we don't have to send paper, which paper equals trees, out to more and more residents' houses. It's always something that can be encouraged, as well as what my fellow candidates have mentioned, always looking into more things like solar power. And in this modern technology, what can we turn to, such as drones, to map out areas for development? Take advantage of modern technology. Also, there's virtual reality, where agents can log on from like the building department, they can go online and use virtual reality, where they don't actually have to take a truck and use fossil fuels to go out there and show up to the site to perform their inspection. Thank you.
Okay, going to our next question. We'll be starting with Mr. Pickett. "In your opinion, how important is the Florida Home Rule in city government and the city council's ability to execute ordinances, codes, and other official actions when the state and county laws and codes do not adequately address the city's specific needs?" We'll start with Mr. Pickett.
As a property owner myself, and I've owned several properties here in the city, I'm very concerned about overreach. I don't want, I don't want the government to make a bunch of ordinances where I can't use my property for what I intended to use it for, but on the same token, I want to make sure that there are particular ordinances in place to ensure that somebody isn't parking, you know, junk cars in their house next door to me, and bringing down my property value, or the grass is growing, you know, four or five feet tall. So it's very important that we're able to use our homes for the purpose that we intended when we bought our homes. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hawk, same question. "How important is the Florida Home Rule?"
Well, it's important for us to work with the other departments in the city of Port St. Lucie. To my fellow candidates, if we are elected, whichever one of us, we will be the newbies there. So we need to take the advice of the people who are already there. We have an award-winning building department under Joel Dramas. I already mentioned Russ Blackburn. It's important for us to work together and, you know, attend all the meetings. So many times you hear council members not attending budget meetings, or not even showing up for city council meetings. I pledge, if I am elected, I will, beyond a reasonable doubt, attend every person meeting. And, okay, there you are, Carol. I lost you for a second. All right, thank you. All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. And next, the next, that goes to Mr. Howell, Florida home rule.
Yes. I, I think one of the things that, that comes to mind when you mention the Florida home rule is that we have the ability or choice, I should say, to live in a gated community where you have HOAs or you can live outside of the gate. But one of the things that I'm proud of is that whatever the council is enforcing right now, along with the, the departments that comprise, I think we're doing a good job. We're, we're doing a good job. There's always room for improvement and as I think Mr. Pickett raised a very good point, homeowners should be able to do what they would like to within reason, but you don't want to do something that's gonna have a negative impact on, on the, the rest of the neighborhood. So, you know, you change your oil, you, you take it inside your garage and do it, you know, don't do it out, outside there and just leave the car, you know, on, on stilts, things of that nature. So I would, as an incoming, if elected, I would come in to see what, what is the general consensus of the council already and what they're doing and how, how, how much are they pushing that? From my vantage point, it, it seems like they're doing a good job because I know Mr. Dramas personally and I obviously know the city manager. And the city looks very, very good as you drive around the neighborhoods, particularly in the home within the gated communities and outside of the gated communities. I haven't lived in a bad neighborhood here. Thank you.
Okay. Our last question, we'll start with Mr. Hawke. In the event of a second wave or continuation of the first of COVID-19, what would you do to ensure the health and the well-being of the citizens of Port St. Lucie?
Well, is it, it's important for the council to work together, take the recommendations once again from the CDC and the experts, but it's gonna be very hard for us to shut down again completely. We had, you know, very almost devastating effects on small businesses. So if we don't have support from the federal government and the state of Florida, it's, you know, we have to find a balance where safety is working in conjuncture at the same time with people's livelihood. I mean, a lot of times the federal government is using the model of the Spanish flu, which happened 100 years ago. I think everybody will agree, the country is completely different from there. We just can't have hospital beds out in the middle of fields and, you know, hope people get better. I mean, we are in uncharted territory. We have to try to work together. That's what I love about the nonpartisan aspect of this. I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, or Independent, you know, we all need to work together to make Port St. Lucie the best it can be. Thank you.
Okay. Next to Mr. Howell, what would you do to ensure the health and well-being of citizens?
Well, we, we definitely have to look at, at what's being espoused from the federal level and then the state level, and then it comes down to the, the county and then to the city. We have to, those, those four levels of government have to be working in unison. With the close proximity of Port St. Lucie and Fort Pierce, then if we're enforcing something here in Port St. Lucie and they're not in the city of Fort Pierce, then we have to lean on our legislators at the county level because the city, the county is not, not that big in terms of us being able to cross. I can get to Fort Pierce in 10 minutes from where I'm sitting right now, vice versa. So the bottom line is we have to really pay attention to the science, take it serious because there are people who are dying. All right? I think Mr. Hawke, he, he illustrated it best. Use the social distancing, you know, wear your mask. All right? Those things are very important. Those, the COVID-19 is crossing all color lines, all ethnicities, all partisanship. It, it is real and we need to ensure that we do as necessary to keep them, keep our constituents safe. And also try to work out some type of strategy to ensure that the business owners know that we are working towards getting them, getting seats back into their establishments and that that's not being just cast aside. That's what I will do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pickett. In the event of more COVID-19, what would you do to ensure the health and well-being of citizens?
Again, Carol, we, we need to look at the data. We need to, to look at mistakes that we made the first time around and make corrections based on those mistakes. We need to rely on technology, this, this format that we're, we're setting in right now. It wasn't even, it wasn't even considered a year ago. We'd all been set in the same room. So we need to take advantage, every advantage of, of the technology that, that we have before us. I think when the, the first time, the first wave come through the city, they had people working at home. I know my daughter, she, she's, she was in Seattle. I had brought her back here to Port St. Lucie and she's working remotely, her job at Google right here in this very office that I'm sitting in. So we need, we need to take advantage of every opportunity like that should a second wave come around. Pay attention to the data. Do common sense things. Work, excuse me, wear your mask, wash your hands thoroughly for 20 seconds, the social distancing. Don't go around, if, if you, if you feel sick, stay home. It, it's real simple. I work in Palm Beach, I commute back and forth between Palm Beach. Palm Beach has been under, was under a mask mandate long before Port St. Lucie or St. Lucie County ever, ever did. That's one big problem we have from county to county. You don't have any kind of cohesion and if it's gonna be, we have a big number of people that live in Port St. Lucie that work in, in, in Palm Beach County. So it needs to be the same, the same, things need to be enforced here as in, as, as our, our neighboring counties. So common sense things, wear your mask. If you're home, if you're sick, stay home, wash your hands thoroughly and social distancing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to confirm, we will be going to the closing statements. There are no other questions?
Actually, I'm gonna ask, we have a little bit of time, so I'm gonna ask a question that I get asked a lot when people talk to the League of Women Voters about the candidates, especially in the city of Port St. Lucie. So the question I get asked a lot is, when are we getting a downtown? Because the city center is there and that downtown area has been there for a really long time and there's a lot of taxes attached to that area. So the question to the candidates is, what are your plans to address that area of Port St. Lucie that was designated to be our downtown?
Okay. By our rotation, we'd start with Mr. Howell.
Yes. That, I, I was here during that time and that area from my research has since been put on the blocks to be, be sold, those areas. If we're, we're talking about the east of US-1 over where city center is, civic center. And so the focus now is on Southern Grove, basically. That's where most of the opportunity is presenting. I've been talking about this since 2014, Southern Grove and the prospects that it has there. There is going to be some attention given to that area there, but, but parts of those parcels are going to be, be sold. So I don't think that that is the best place for a downtown center. That opportunity from my vantage point is probably gonna present itself in the Southern Grove, Southern Grove area adjacent to I-95, between Gatlin and Becker.
Mr. Pickett?
Yes, ma'am. One of these, the, the city, the city's studied and it supposedly had a downtown and then going for downtown and it's never come, it's never come about. I attended a planning meeting, I think back in October, November timeframe, specifically for the Southern Groves area. And, and one of the things that was brought up was, was downtown area and it's something that, that the city's looking into and, but I, I agree with Mr. Howell, there's opportunities in, in, in Southern Groves, but there's also opportunities that present itself on the eastern side of our city. Now that Crosstown's open and that thoroughfare's through there, there's, there's economic opportunity that presents itself on that side of the city and that, and, and needs to be explored. I know that they're, they're gonna talk about it here in the next couple of months. And I think that we could, we could actually make that downtown area come alive where it was supposed to in, in the first place. But it's just gonna take a little planning. And like I said, there's opportunities on both sides of the city for economic growth and I think our best bet would probably, probably be to have a downtown on the eastern side of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Hawke, downtown?
Well, currently, most people would consider downtown the newly named Mid-Florida Credit Union Event Center, AKA the Civic Center. Doesn't just blow and roll off your tongue. They were considering changing the name of the actual street into their, to that, but I think they're just gonna leave it as Event Center. It has been losing money, but you know, they've been trying a lot of different things. They had some concerts there. There was one with Styx that was very successful. I had some friends actually attend that. There was another one planned with Little River Band later in the year, but that's probably gonna be canceled due to COVID-19. They do have a lot of things in there that's normally used, you know, exercise facilities. There's even a museum in there. I think if we continue to develop job growth, we recently lured a cell to open up a factory here. Once that gets developed, I think if jobs flow here, we might be able to develop our own downtown by osmosis. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any more questions?
I think we're good to go on to the closing statements. So let's go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Great. Closing statements, we'll start with Chancellor Howell.
Yes. Again, thank you, League of Women Voters, and I would like to thank my two fellow candidates again as well. I am Chancellor Howell. I've served this country now, I'm ready to serve you as District Two, City of Port St. Lucie City Councilman. My platform consists of low taxes, safe neighborhoods, economic development, and near and dear to my heart, Veterans Affairs. This is about leadership. You have three choices here. These are two fine gentlemen, but I believe that a culmination of my work experience, my knowledge of the area, and this is about leadership, all three of us are leaders. It's some of those qualities of intellect, human understanding, and moral character that enables a person to lead a group of people successfully. You have three choices. These are two fine gentlemen, but I believe I should be the candidate of choice based on my knowledge of what I bring to the table and taking nothing away from any of them. These are fine gentlemen, my first time meeting and I salute them both.
Closing statement from Mr. Pickett.
I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event this evening and giving me the opportunity to address your questions. And over the course of my military career, I've been involved in, with things that have set the table for me to become your next District Two Councilman. The council needs someone who can step in and with little training be able to understand budgets and someone who has experience in contract negotiations. They need someone who's formerly trained in emergency management and can draw off real-world experiences when the demand comes to deal with natural disasters that might hit our area and I am that person. Someone who is very, also someone who's very versed in transportation and logistics. I'm a military veteran who knows what hard work is and not afraid of it. I'll put forth the same dedication and commitment as your city councilman as I put forth in running this campaign. Bringing jobs to the city and ensuring that our residents have high-paying jobs is a priority to me. I'll work closely with the economic council to see if these types of businesses are brought here. Additionally, I feel that it's important to make sure that we continue to fund our understaffed police department to ensure that Port St. Lucie remains one of the safest cities in the state. Lowering our taxes is not just something that's a campaign promise, it's something that's very near and dear to my heart. I'll work closely with the county commissioners to encourage them to reduce their military rate as Port St. Lucie has done for the past four years. And finally, I'll work with the school board and IRC to provide vocational training for our high school students. Local trades are in dire need of trained workers and with the implementation of manufacturing jobs coming to our city, the need for well-trained workforce does exist. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're looking for someone who can and will do as they say they, they will, that person is me. I look forward to furthering the progress that the city council has already established and, and working with the current council. And I look forward to being your next District Two representative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we go to Mr. Hawke, closing statement.
Once again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Carol and Andy for giving me a chance to answer the questions of concerned voters. These are troubled times in the world with the challenges of COVID-19. Despite that, Port St. Lucie remains a strong, thriving city. In the last 10 years, our population has increased by 40,000 people. We are now Florida's seventh largest city and by all accounts, one of the safest large, largest cities in the United States. Your census projections are correct. Once all numbers are finalized, we should expect even more residents this year. Construction continues to climb. I see myself as the missing piece of the council's puzzle. I will pledge to you to be an accessible member of the council, available to all members of my district via phone or email. I'll be a visible member of the community and a facial not just see when the next election rolls around. I want Port St. Lucie to be a city for all. I appreciate this is a nonpartisan position where it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat, Republican, or Independent. If you are a resident of Port St. Lucie, your opinion matters to me. As a resident and a taxpayer, I pledge to attend every city council meeting unless the situation rises out of my control. I offer you fair and honest leadership. I have not accepted special interest donations. I would be honored to have your vote for Port St. Lucie City Council, District Two. Thank you.
We thank all of our candidates, Chancellor Howell, David Pickett, and John Hawke for participating in the forum today. Thanks certainly to the members of the League for the questions and putting the hard work in there. And we thank everyone who has been watching and listening for informing yourselves. So very important. Andy?
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, candidates. We are so honored to have the opportunity to present the candidates to the public and to the voters so that you can become informed. It is the mission of the League of Women Voters to inform the voters of this county and, and all of the citizens of each city. So we thank you for joining us. Again, thank you so much to Carol Wyatt for being our moderator and we hope that you will join us next week when we do this all over again on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We'll be, we'll have candidates from Fort Pierce City Commission for one of those districts. We'll have Fort Pierce Mayor and we're gonna have the two candidates for supervisor of elections. So we hope that you'll join us at 7 o'clock, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week on Facebook Live. And thank you all. Don't forget to vote, fill out your census, and visit vote411.org. Have a wonderful night.